Wash.
I'm gonna call a meeting to order, Lisa.
provided on January fourteenth, two thousand twenty one, a publication of notice from the express times. On the same day, Mayor Varsany.
Here.
Mr. Baylor.
Here.
Mr. Beam.
Here.
Mr. McCutcheon.
Here.
Ms. McDermott.
Here.
Mr. Legary.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Finelli.
Here. You stand for this side.
I'd like to. The United States of America into the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every team of justice.
And then before we start, just like to note that we had a township resident and the husband of one of our employees shot in the line of duty yesterday as a police officer down in Yard Lake. And I'd just like to ask everyone to remember that in your careers, he's doing okay. I think he was discharged from the hospital tonight. But we have frantic twenty-four hours with the secretary and his family. Joe has not only is his wife a employee here. Joe has contributed hours when we're re-establishing the chief's era in the township after the fiasco from the previous administration. He offered to mentor and help out to reorganize the department with the chief at free of charge. So he's done a lot for the township as well, but I just ask that we all keep him and his family in our careers and all law enforcement and really even our servicemen overseas because they're in a tough spot right now too as well. Okay, looking for a motion to approve the meeting minutes, regular meeting from July fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Make a motion.
Make the motion.
I can find anybody. Any questions, comments, corrections, deletions? Roll call.
Mayor Varsany.
Yes.
Mr. Baylor.
Yes.
Mr. Beam.
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon.
Yes.
Ms. McDermott.
Yes.
Looking for a motion to accept the treasurer's report in the August bill list. If you want to make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
A second. Does anybody have anything they pulled or any questions before we vote?
Just a comment. I know how important IT services are and things of that nature, but when I read it independently and look at the parat disorders and things like that, I'll be the first to tell you, I don't clearly understand the lingo. And I would like somebody other than me to be kind of reviewing the actual POs just to see that it all seems to be in line. I mean, this month, our IT expenses were six thousand and change. I just don't understand it when I'm reading it and everything else like that. And I'm just kind of curious as to, you know, to just make sure that's all in line.
Is that when the phone went down?
I mean, our IT costs went up, I think five hundred dollars a month last year, just with the new server backup requirements for the PD. And that's one that always sticks out to me this month. I saw the charge that he was talking about. I think it was another almost nine hundred dollars. It could have been when, I mean, the police went down.
They were probably an email system for a couple of days too or something.
Yeah.
But I said, I'm not questioning it. It's just that I'm just not familiar with the language. And so I don't want me to be filmed when reviewing.
What if you want to be started to sit down with them? I write to professional.
Then roll call when you have a question.
Mayor Varsany.
Yes.
Mr. Baylor.
Yes.
Mr. Beam.
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon.
Yes.
Ms. McDermott.
Yes.
If I will make a motion to accept the tax collectors' taxes or reports from July twenty twenty-one.
I'll make the motion.
Maybe one second.
A second.
And we have any questions, comments? Roll call.
Mayor Varsany.
Yes.
Mr. Baylor.
Yes.
Mr. Beam.
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon.
Yes.
Ms. McDermott.
Yes.
Police Department report chief, you want to actually give it or you all talked about, I guess you were training all day, right?
Let's see. Right yourself. A little bit higher on the, I mean, everything was kind of far except we were a little bit higher on the arrest for the month of July seventeen arrests. We are continuing to enforce the truck traffic. Yes, your vehicles out there, but again, it's still. And vacations are going to start to come down a little bit. A lot of guys take vacation in the summer. And the class two filled in some of the spots. So next month will be the first month where we'll be strictly doing truck enforcement and that's it. So we should see some more of that. Was there any questions about the reporter?
How would a truck?
They're stopping a lot.
Stopping a lot, yeah.
Yeah, we, we are, there was a lot of vacation. So there's a lot of spots where there wasn't a lot of coverage.
There's still a lot. I see them pulling over all the time.
Actually, I even saw state police out there one day this week.
I mean, I'd like to comment to you. I do see them being pulled over on a regular basis, but I see, I also see zero improvement either.
Oh, I don't think we're gonna get any.
Right.
We're gonna talk about that tonight. That's an executive that we talked about. Yeah, we're gonna talk about that tonight, the executives, but we've said this over and over. The problem is the truckers are from all over. So it's not like they're going back to one place saying, you better watch Greenwood. They're really hammering us for going on the roads. That's the real problem. It's like, there's no, that's the deterrent value of running tickets. It usually goes back to an industry or community saying, you know, you better watch taking a shortcut through Greenwood. You're gonna take, there's nowhere for them to get that information through. The one company we called to dealt with, and they were very cooperative. And the guy said, it's gonna take me a week to get the message out. So we got five hundred trucks in that area any given day. So they came and called their own people in a, in a day, all right?
I had to stop one of those trucks from that company.
Yeah, well, so like anything else, your employees don't listen to everything you're told, yeah.
It's worked for a little while there, so we'll see how.
Yes, but, but my point was, in one company, he said, it's taking more than a week to let everybody know. So somebody gets a ticket, they never, the other guys in the company probably even though he got a ticket. Go ahead.
You done? You know what? Did I attach? I don't have any of the overtime for the other questions. I just like to mention, our secretary's husband was a, as the official yard leader involved in the shooting yesterday, got hit. He's okay. And, you know, he it's kind of felt throughout our department because Danielle's with us every day and whatnot, but small department and smaller than us, less populated than us, and these things happen. And, you know, glad they's okay.
I just want to thank you guys for pulling together too and helping Danielle out and a brother officer. I don't know if you guys know, but PD went right to the house with her. They drove her to the hospital, stayed with her, made sure he was okay. And then the police departments down in his area met them at the hospital and they coordinated everything pretty well. But I just want to thank you guys for being there for your fellow employees.
Well, thank you also for being on topic, maybe.
I didn't want to overstep my bounds. I was like the old days.
Did, but you did a great job. Thank you.
Thanks. I guess Lisa called me. We couldn't get a hold of anybody. She knows I've handled several police shootings in my career and I did what he would have normally done. I apologized to him, but we couldn't get a hold of him. So I actually was directed him to get a court of house driver and get everybody to the hospital and everything. They did it and I appreciate that they did it. And, you know, I'm glad we did it for, for the family. So.
Well done, Mr. Mayor.
So I don't want to, I didn't want to overstep you, but I appreciate your remark. Okay, Joe's not going to be here. Lisa, do you want to give a report or is this standing your written report or?
I gave a second page for anybody that picked it up early. I think it emailed it to you, but, you know, if you guys don't have any questions, I think I have the items that are on there that we might need to vote on, I believe, are actually listed on the agenda later.
Okay. So you don't need to highlight anything right now or just?
I don't think so. The only thing that I didn't put on there is that I did call, you know, when we switched over to Zoom equipment, I called and I was a little nervous that Gramco wouldn't give us a refund, which is our old server unit under there that was basically obsolete. And within two weeks, they sent us a check for six hundred and one dollars. So it was very easy to deal with. So that was good. Otherwise, I think everything's in there.
Okay. So I guess I'm looking for a motion to accept the police department reports, the department public works report, township clerks report, the annual control officers report. Do you have anything to add to the ACR report?
No, just the chief.
Okay, and the court reports from July twenty twenty-one. If anyone will make that motion?
Make the motion.
Second?
A second.
If I have any questions, comments?
Just real quick.
Yeah.
Sorry, the secrets, Lisa, because I didn't get to meet with you on this time. I see August nineteenth, you have a webinar.
That was this morning, actually. Yeah, I did attend it. I was a few minutes late signing on. I don't feel like I learned anything new, so I'm not sure why there was a new requirement that we do that, but that's what Joe was calling us up to the DOT. So I sat through the webinar.
Thank you.
We have to, you know, we know our marching orders. Basically, it's essentially the same. The one thing that they did mention is that they're going to waive the, normally when you apply, there's a requirement for taking the tallies. I don't know if it's for a week of like school children getting there and leaving and they're waving that because last year students didn't go.
Yeah.
So at some point in the grant process, you'll have to update that, but to apply, you don't need it. So that was about it.
Okay. Thanks.
We wait for a roll call.
Uh, yeah. Mayor Varsany.
Yes.
Mr. Baylor.
Yes.
Mr. Beam.
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon.
Yes. Committee reports, who has?
Anything for you to talk about? Um, I could talk about Rock. I just, I need Lisa for some of it. Um, they were able to get approved by the family, go past his family officer, go past her. Um, we're gonna have a five K run that Lisa's actually helping set up with. I guess, Chief, are you involved with that?
Yes.
Okay, so they're working on a run. I'm pretty excited about it. It's just getting everything together that they're hiring a company to come help stage the run. And that's going to be right for Community Day. So besides that.
The morning of your?
Yeah, the morning of, yeah. What else do I have? I'm still looking in the mesh sun shields for the playgrounds. We, I know Joe contacted the company that installed the playground and they didn't really have anything. So we're gonna have to find something that, you know, that our structures. That's about it. I know they're going to be contacting, Rex is gonna be contacting the school to get access for the fall for basketball. That was pretty much it.
Anything for the board head?
You have anything?
No, we didn't meet. We don't meet in the month of August.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any?
Yeah, land support. Ingraham, the affordable housing contractor, Ken gave a site plan for approval. It was approved unanimously. So that's moving along. I thought they did a pretty good job.
Yeah.
Mike.
And Justin.
Dave, you want to add?
No, there's a, there's still, and we talked about it very briefly at the meeting. This is Mike Finelli's own professional opinion. I think there's still going to be major hurdle for them to get through over relative to crosswalk. I know we've talked about the crosswalk for years. I don't see the county relenting and we'll see what comes up, but.
Meaning what?
Yeah, what do you mean relenting? When we had the site meeting with them, they were all on board. So now they're not on board?
I think you.
Did I misinterpret?
Yeah.
They were there.
Yeah, I thought Bill said.
Bill said he was gonna be fine with that crosswalk.
Yeah.
Okay, maybe I'm reading wrong.
Different than what they said.
Because I know, I mean, they, they hate mid block, mid block crosswalks. That, that's a, that's a.
I don't consider it a mid block. It's an intersection.
Yeah, but it's a non, it's a non signalized or it's a, if it's a four-way stop, that's all the story. It's not gonna be a four-way.
My virtual being an intersection.
Isn't it a crosswalk?
It already is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's needed regardless.
So it's not mid-block. It's an intersection.
Bob.
And by virtual of it being an intersection.
Don't, don't, don't kill the messenger. I'm just, I, and if I, if, if what my feeling is about this proves to be wrong and off base, then, then good.
Yeah.
Uh, but I've worked with Bill Bleeve a long time and, and.
Was he at the site?
Yes.
Yeah, Bill was there.
Yeah.
I understand. He indicated no issues with the crosswalk.
Circulation.
So now, this is, to me, this is.
Okay, I, I think you definitely missed some things at that, from the meeting, from the meeting, when you say he had no problems with the crosswalk. Absolutely, he has problems with the crosswalk just because of the degree of traffic that's crossing there and the length of the cross.
His words, Mike, his words.
Okay.
I looked over there. It's already being used as a crosswalk.
Oh, yeah, but for them, okay.
So it makes sense.
But for them to approve and endorse, I'm, you will see how it plays out. I mean, I don't mean, I'm not trying to rainbow the brave here.
But I like to get ahead of this.
Well, here's the question. If they say you can't do anything to it, it's a crosswalk. We have to put a crossing guard there and it's just unmarked.
And. Yeah, it can't stop the circulation.
Well, has it? No, that's the argument since day one, that you've got sixty-six apartments across the street from a Home Depot on a ShopRite. And those people are going to be crossing the street. I mean, my God, you can't just close your eyes to the fact that there will be people crossing. So that has been my argument to them. So make it as safe as it can be. Whatever you gotta do, you, to, 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 for the comfort of, of, again, making it as safe as it can be.
No.
Didn't we ask for a traffic light there and they said no?
Right.
Isn't that really yes?
That wall we threw at, threw at.
That, that, okay, but my, my point is, is like, I don't always say what you're being by. They're not like, they're not gonna stripe it. They're not gonna put any, like, is that what you're basically saying? They don't want to prove it at all? Is that, is that what you put that?
Well, no, it's gonna be, and they're not, they're not even put up signs or? No, no, first of all, they, they.
Ingraham. Yeah, you can go up.
Still has their approval to get through. This would be an item of potential.
Side up there.
The non-compliance with the county. The county, I mean, we'll see. I, I, the county hasn't come out and said, no way, no how.
But, Mike, just one question. You say non-compliance with the county, but the town is under no obligation to provide a walking path anywhere. So how is it non-compliance? It's just, we don't have to put it in there.
No, we don't do anything.
Correct. So that doesn't stop the project whether it's there or not?
Uh, no, it wouldn't stop the project, but it's still, it's, that, okay, I guess as, as, as an engineer dealing with all these other agencies every day, you, you need to dot all the i's, cross all the t's and comply with, with all, you know, all these review comments. So if it's hanging out there as a comment, if it is, um, then I guess we're gonna have to see how it plays out. If the, if the county basically says that they're not endorsing this, if they're not approving what is being proposed. I, I don't know. I mean, you guys obviously have a different feel for this that, and I, you know, I'm not telling you.
I'm asking you what they mean by they're not going to endorse. It's already a crosswalk. That's a fact. It's a crosswalk. It's at an intersection. It's a crosswalk. It's legal to cross there. That's where you're supposed to cross.
The circulation pattern.
So we're, we're trying to make the developer do what the county wants to make it as safe as possible. So if they say we don't endorse anything, we leave it the way it is. We put a crossing guard there for school crossing. And when somebody gets hit, I guess that's when, that's when we determine who was wrong there. That's what we're basically saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I just.
Is that what we're saying, Mike?
No, no, listen, arguing logic with county engineering department is, so listen, I would just say this, this is the same county engineering department that with cannonball pools got their approval. Remember, that's their road. The sidewalk is in their easement and they wanted us with them to find it. It took me six months to.
I'm not arguing with them. I, it's unless you.
Correct.
It's a fact. It's an intersection. It's a crosswalk.
If they acknowledge it or don't acknowledge.
Knowledge is a crosswalk. It's legal for the cross there. We're gonna put a crossing guard. That's where they're gonna cross. And if something happens, we're gonna at least have to document it that we were willing to make the developer bring it up to as safe as an engineer can determine it to be. So if they're gonna do nothing, I said it's all on them.
Aren't they gonna cut that in and shorten it?
Well, they were gonna relocate the, the actual ramp location.
So what happened with that?
Well, Ingraham's, Ingraham's guy, I think, has to revise the plans accordingly.
Are they revised yet or we don't know?
Well, they revised them a number of months ago in conjunction with the township resubmitment. So, but, you know, they still, I don't know where they are with soil conservation. They still need DEP. They still need county. So it's like, it's like a regular application, like of a large project. There's at least the three main entities, township, county, soil conservation, and then if they have DEP rules, this one does as well because it's sewer and so, so.
So when do we get an official notification if there's an issue? Like, when are they gonna make a decision?
Well, um, I gotta check to see or to call, obviously, to see if when they submitted, they being Ingraham and dynamic, they're engineers. If they submitted to the county, I, I don't think they did. I think they just submitted to us. So they have to submit to the county and the county, then it's the review process.
All right, I'll give Jeff a call.
Yeah, I asked him, ask him if he, if he, if he submitted to the county and where that stands.
Anybody else have any reports, committee reports? Professional reports. Mike Finelli, you just gave half of one.
I wasn't expecting to speak so long on that. Just an update. We obviously submitted the DOT apps that we spoke of a month or so back. They submitted ahead of schedule. Again, as for Willow Grove Road and Beatty's Road. There's still Rickline Hill Road, section two, which was last year's grant, which I know we're not doing this year, but that's, we still have the money and still out there. Something obviously you're gonna need to do next year or you'll lose the month. And otherwise, you know, there's a little activity at the, obviously, the board, what Frank indicated with the, with the Willow's application. Otherwise, fairly, fairly quiet.
Mike, anything you talk about in public because yours all.
Yeah, just, um, we received the title report on the Lee farm. Remember, that's when the county was gonna transfer their interest. So there were no issues with it. Matter of fact, they already filed the deed. We saw on the title work. There were no issues. So I received a response from LMR's attorney on my letter that you had authorized me to send at the last meeting, which we will discuss an executive. And then that's about it.
Mike, did you ever follow up on the lease and the aerosol on the crop dusting?
Frank Pinto was gonna do that only because I didn't want to give an opinion on that since my firm represents the Warren County Ag Board. I did tell him, if it's in our lease, you, you can't, I think I copied you on that. You can't get ag board protection if they agree to terms in a lease and then say, hey, wait a minute, when I signed the lease, I never intended to abide by that. So I, I don't think they're going anywhere. I think Frank was gonna, I think he was gonna reach out to John Drill, the last email that he sent me. Because I said, listen, I'm telling you right now, that's not protected by right to farm. They read, each one of our leases says you can't apply aerial, you can't do aerial spraying. That's gonna be upheld. So, but I told them, just confirm that with John because I don't want to get in the middle of, yeah.
Yeah, just so everybody knows, this was crop dusting on town-owned property that we leased. We already have an ordinance saying that can't be done or it's a lease.
And you put in the lease, there's a provision in the lease that says you are not allowed to aerial spray. So everybody that put on those form things accepted the terms of those leases. So.
We already had, didn't we, no aerial spray?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's, it's right. I didn't remember that it was put in the lease. John put it, but it's in there. So I just said, we can't get, you can't agree to something and then say later, well, I never intended to abide by that because I got right to farm reduction. So. Because that was what the farmer in, on that particular piece of property said, well, I got right to farm. I could do it. Now, I don't think if it wasn't in the lease, then we'd have an interesting issue, but it's our land. So.
Yeah, I don't write the farm as only for owner-owned farms, not public farms, like not public property that's being leased out, but we don't have to talk about it now.
Yeah, it's, if you're involved in it, accepted that management practice. Yeah.
I'm curious, Frank, what town field did they actually spray?
They sprayed the Lee farm. But now the issue with the Lee farm is that we don't really own it yet. So he's okay this time.
Okay.
Once the town owns it, then he has to sign a new lease agreement, I'm assuming?
Yeah, and you own it now. Yeah.
Oh, so there you go. So going forward, he shouldn't be spraying it. And I don't know, I don't know if he's doing the.
Was he seeding? Last year? Is he seeding or is he dusting? Was he?
No, he's dusting because he had responded that.
Okay, okay.
I don't know. Is he doing Thomas Stewart Park? I don't even know.
No, I, I, I was pretty much aware of all those three or four days when they were there and I never saw him close to the park.
Okay, so at least he's a buyer now, it looks like. So, all right, that was it.
Anything else? Anybody? Old business, township owned property.
Did you ever get a response?
Is that about the fencing last month?
No, I believe that was still on.
Shavey shine? And I think we still, yeah.
Yeah, we haven't gotten, yeah. Mr. Savers has not been back.
And the fence was installed.
Yeah, fence was installed. Looks good.
Yep, thank you. Community Day, Lisa.
I, I provided a written report so you guys could, you know, not spend time at the meeting. Does anybody have any questions about, about that? Essentially, just the COVID, we're moving forward and not doing, and our budget, we're just moving forward with more, you know, yard type carnival games that people can spread out and not doing things like bounce houses and putting a bunch of kids inside together.
We have one meeting, I was here for one meeting and seemed like Rex and the, and the boost is both stepping up, taking on a lot. So I appreciate those two groups, what they're doing.
If you need help to work such, you know.
That's great, yeah. The one big thing we're just waiting on is just finding out if, you know, the Mountain Dews are gonna come forward and want to sponsor this by.
Sorry.
Yeah. You know, the issue with that is that either, either way is fine, but we just need to know because we're gonna run out of time to get the proper permitting from Division of Fire. So.
Did he speak with you originally?
He sent an email originally.
Okay, he hasn't responded to the email.
Yeah.
Who wants to sponsor?
Mountain Dews, they took over.
Oh, Mountain Dews.
Yeah. So they had offered that, you know, it wasn't like we solicited anything. They said they were new and we'd love to do that for you if you're gonna move forward.
I hope this is successful.
A lot into that.
Yeah, yeah, it looks, looks, definitely gonna go there.
Title work update we just had, right?
Yeah.
Basketball court update. So we got, I mean, how many we have right now?
We have two bids, two quotes so far, and I'm expecting two more.
So I'd like to do is in the September meeting, I'd like to, um, just, you know.
Do we want to set a deadline for them to submit the, the two remaining? Because we really didn't set a deadline for them to submit to us. I mean, do we want to do it a week before our next meeting or, I mean?
Good, excuse me. Is one of the two you're referring to Bartha?
Yes.
Okay, I spoke with them today because obviously the meeting tonight, I thought we were looking to take action, to be honest, tonight. They, well, they asked if they could have a few more days. I said, no. And we can call, but it's okay. No, I mean, that's, yeah, now the, the rules of the game are changed. I really thought we were gonna take action on this tonight.
Now I've responded to your email and just advised.
Okay, well then, no, well then, okay, so he then, then we might. Well, Kent is.
Are you okay if, like, if I look over the submissions with Brian and then make a recommendation? I mean, everybody's gonna make their own comments anyway, but.
Yeah, that's fine.
So we could turn it down to.
Do you want to look at them at all, Paul? Do you want to be involved or have a review?
Uh.
Well, if you send them everything.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So it's okay, I'll email all the people that I sent.
Send it to, so what I like to do is actually, I'd like to meet them because they're gonna submit a quote, but, you know, it's gotta go beyond that, right? We gotta see examples of, of past courts that they've done. I don't want somebody.
So let's set a due date right now so that you'll have time to do that before the next meeting?
Yeah.
Zoning and foreman follow up.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, so you have the due date then?
Do you want to do September second?
Yeah.
Because in two weeks from now?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll let him know.
Is somebody, are you gonna call Bartha then and tell him?
I will.
Or, okay, I know you had, you had, okay, no, that's fine.
I emailed them all before, so I'll just email that whole.
And you have, you have, you have obviously electronic copies of my, of my plan and spec and stuff for that?
Yeah.
All right, good.
Okay, zoning and foreman follow up, Paul?
Actually, I'm a little in the dark about, I mean, I know that somebody had Larry send out, Lisa, you had Larry send out letters to the, about the graffiti and such?
Um, I had requested that he do that if it wasn't in the original to do a follow-up. And when I followed up with him, it, I could not get confirmation that that was done, but I don't think it was done. I will say that they did get all of my certified letters regarding vacant property registration. They were all signed by the property owner and I got their green cards back and to date, we've received.
All right, so Tuesday night, we need to look in Larry's file. All right, so Tuesday night, we need to look in Larry's file or discuss that with him.
Because what I'd like to do is, once we get, send that certified letter to them, they get a certain amount of time, right?
Correct, it should have been ten days, and quite frankly, that letter should have gone out probably two months ago, but we'll get on it.
Okay.
And also with the vacant property registration, they, we just sent out their second notice with that, so.
Great, thank you. And what's this recurrence of snipe signs? I'm not familiar with that.
I don't wanna name a uh business in town. But there's a certain business that's constantly putting up these snipe signs. The town takes them down. Joe's been going along New Brunswick. Few days later, the signs are up all over the place. So at some point, they gotta get a certified letter, or they're gonna have to be fined because they don't seem to be abiding by it, and maybe not aware of it.
Yeah.
You know, so I think what we need to do is.
Yeah, but talk to, yeah, but that's exactly what should happen. Larry should send a certified letter and say, you know, we've gotten two warnings and here's your certified letter that, you know.
All right, so I'll give you the name.
Yes.
And you talk to him Tuesday, let's put them in. And I don't know, maybe it's a good idea. We sent it to, well, you don't have to worry about this business for now. I mean, they just seem to be repeated constantly.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you're right, Doctor. If they're recurring, continue to do it. We should start filing them.
Yeah.
Otherwise.
And I mean, I'd have to look at the code, but I'm sure the way the code, the penalties are probably, you know, it's just our standard code, so it can be as low as a hundred and up to a thousand. That's typically how it's written.
Okay.
So Larry can start at a hundred and.
That's fine, just as long as they get something going.
Right.
Okay. So Dropbox, we have on.
Do we have a follow up on that?
I didn't see it pick it up. It's like last Saturday, they had the whole people once. They, since they were notified about two months ago, I personally think that they're they're, they stepped up their game uh considerably about trying to keep the area clean. Uh. The bottom line is what's happening is it's not their fault. Um, be it residents, residents and neighboring communities and stuff like that. People are strictly abusing it. Um, but they've stepped up their game in keeping it clean. It's the cleanest I've seen it in months. Um, but they know sooner. I I mean, they were there two days ago, and when I came up through there today, and I mean, it's not happening tonight, it's happening right during.
Oh, yeah.
Right, and and I come through there today and I was just like.
I'm actually mattresses here.
Yeah, no, right, right. Air conditioners, TVs, no, everything's there. And I just, I feel bad because A number one, even before they were taking great care of it, they're required to take everything regardless.
Yeah.
So they do come.
And they gotta pay to get rid of it.
They gotta pay to get rid of it, so it's really.
So the nonprofits not.
It it, well, it's cutting into their profits regardless. And I just feel bad that, you know, and again, I I don't want the town to foot the bill for it. Maybe Toll Brothers could, but again, a sign that just says this area is under surveillance, even though it's not, you know, maybe it deteriorates something, you know.
I'd even suggest that a sign right on the bins or right next to it.
You know, something.
Are fine.
No, right, right, exactly. So again, I just, I feel bad for the situation up there. It's uh 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 and I'm not gonna get on the soapbox about some other things, but it's it's just a bad situation um that they're trapped into, but I think the last month, month and a half, they've been doing a really pretty darn good job of keeping it clean.
Lisa brought up a good suggestion, yeah.
Uh, I had just said we should, you know, talk to them about putting signs right on the bins that outline our fines for littering.
Yeah.
Because then it's right there. If the cops see them, they they know what.
I mean, they're doing.
What what minutes number it is and everything, it's right on the sign.
No, no, is that just a request?
Yeah.
Well, so the other thing, um I I think it's included in your packets, but Brian had asked me to look into it, ordinance to regulate them, and that's part of what we were looking at. Um, is just making sure that we have really good contact information for the people that own the bins. If we knew the people, we could call them up and have this conversation with them. And I'm sure they wouldn't be opposed because they don't wanna mattress out there either, so.
It's not gonna be a new phone call for them.
And I'm sure they would love, you know, the support and help to stop it, so.
I have a, I have a contact for those bits.
You do?
They're not here, are they?
No.
Lisa, are we gonna discuss the walking sign ordinance this meeting or is that next meeting?
Well, you can just mention that it's, you know, the draft points are in there, and then if people can get back any other comments they have, we could put it in an ordinance form. It's really not in an ordinance form yet.
All right, so maybe we'll try to address, Lisa sent out the draft ordinance on the walking sign ordinance. Then we were talking about restricting um human signs.
Oh.
So um, anyway, take a look and maybe we could do something next meeting.
Yeah.
We done with zoning? Okay, road truck restriction signs follow up. Mike, you have anything on that? I know Lisa sent an email to them.
I I was just gonna update everyone. I sent the email on.
Yeah.
Whatever date on July twenty first, I I emailed them after having a conversation with um, I think I spoke to Mr. Suda. And he, and anyway, I sent them a follow up email just outlining the contents of our conversation, which addressed the Dumont Road weight limit signage, the engine braking signs, which has just been so long driving, and also getting those weight sensors. And when I, when I spoke to the gentleman that day, he indicated that they'd work on the signage issues. He wasn't sure what the holdup was with those, but that their weight sensors uh were basically not functioning and they were waiting to get new digital warrants, and when they had them, they'd be happy to lend them.
Great.
So two days ago, Tuesday, I finally got an email response from um Mr. Gliba that basically apologized for the delay. Didn't address anything, but did say that they took some manual readings of truck traffic, and as soon as they pulled it together, they would get it to us.
Okay.
But that's all I have, so.
Oh, you know, I have seen the county forest parks up here, so we were counting trucks.
That's what they were doing, yeah.
Okay.
And you know, in lieu of not having those.
Yeah. I saw him uh, I saw him at the corner of Maple and Kennedy Mill one day, and then another day at Robert's place at Kennedy Mill, they were around five uh one seventy three in South Main.
Interesting city.
I was thinking they were, I think they're gonna repay that next year. I thought they were there for that, because they were there a couple of months ago putting markings out, so.
From the, from the signage side of things, Bob. Um, and I spoke with the county months, a couple of months ago now. Um, and Bill finally did send, Bill Gleba, sent me the, what was it, memo or what form it was in, that he had sent, the heat, the county had sent to the developer of the warehouse on Strikers. Uh, and it basically, I addressed a lot of the concerns we had. I mean, as far as the turning movements and, you know, and so forth, both with the with the railroad uh uh culvert and of course, uh keeping trucks on five nineteen to twenty two. Um, so he has, and his comment to me was, we sent this. Um, now we're concerned about it. We noticed, you know, obviously, we gotta control truck, truck movements in that that intersection and in the area. Um, and he hadn't gotten response yet back from the developer or any question saying, okay, I'll put up the signs. So have you seen that document?
I don't think so.
I haven't.
All right.
But with that being said, though, that really doesn't have anything to do with the engine braking signs that we.
No, not the engine brake.
And the weight limit signs on Dumont.
Yeah.
But shouldn't we, shouldn't we be able to put?
Well, no, the weight limit signs on Dumont, we put, we gave Joe Maxi Mack months and many months ago.
Okay.
That, he was supposed to get ordered signs. Yeah, that's, that's, that's just a function of Joe getting the signs and then put a, put a call. The Dumont Road weight limit restriction signs. That's, yeah, the ordinance is already in place, the the signs matter, yeah, so that's done.
Well, I have to tell you that Joe is under the impression that that he has to wait for county approval on that. That that's one of the items that I that I reached out to the county about.
No. On Dumont Road?
So.
Well, signs that either went on the county or.
He understood that we cannot proceed without installation, with installation until the county approves pre signage to be installed on the county route. Five nineteen, six thirty eight.
No, that makes sense.
The, okay, there is, there is some sign, warning signage on on the county roads. That that is true. Does he have the sign? Do you know?
I don't know.
He ordered the, okay.
Joe ordered the sign. I think Joe's had the signs for six months.
Oh, okay, cause I don't. And you, Alicia, you had reached out to Bill to talk to him or?
July twenty first, just cause it had been so many months without a response or an update. They didn't respond to either one of those signage questions. I mean, the engine braking ordinance we adopted in. I have it in somewhere. Twenty twenty, early, late, yes, yeah. November nineteen, twenty twenty.
Yeah, it's out front, yeah.
County Route six thirty nine, that's mine.
I thought I saw that somewhere in.
For which?
For the signs of the.
Well, I'd have to look at the engine braking ordinance, which I also think I brought it out here. I think we designated the specific streets in the ordinance, so.
For the engine brakes?
Yeah.
I don't think we did it for six thirty nine or six thirty seven. Yes, yeah.
Okay.
We done?
Were you asking about wait?
Yes, I didn't realize that this isn't that.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, we done with road restrictions signs? New business.
Looking, oh, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry. If you got something, you can go first.
Nope. Oh, I was gonna do the resolutions on it.
No, I I this isn't really new business. It's kind of old business, but it's cropped up this new business, and I'm gonna need Mike's help on this, and it cropped up. Uh, speaking with John Drill at the Land Use Board meeting the other day. The owner of the old school is what he had originally envisioned it, and I don't know that he's ever shared that with me, maybe with Mike. Um, but he's decided not to move forward with whatever his plans were uh for the building. And apparently, there have been several people that have been interested in the building. And the first step is to contact uh Larry and zoning to see what's permissible there. We created an area in need of redevelopment there, but we really didn't say what could be put there. So when Larry reads the book, it's single resident family and or no more than, I believe, four apartments, correct? Is that, Mike, you think that's about?
Uh, I'd be honest with you, Paul, probably not even that.
Yeah, maybe not even that, not even that. So what's happening is the current owner is like, you know, I bought this, I took this off your hands, and you're turning everybody down. Now, I don't know that it's been official turn down. People have communicated with Larry and stuff like that, and it's not permitted. So John Drill had basically said that we we need to improve our language on that to maybe allow uh uh professional offices or or something along that line. I again, I'm generalizing right now, but what we've put in place isn't working. So we need to give some thought as to what.
Yeah, I don't know if Mike, you remember, it was a while back, a discussion about it, and you originally said, oh, they can put apartments there. And I said, no, we never approved apartments. And then you went back and looked, so no, you're right, Frank. They they can't put apartments there. They have to get land use board approval. So I don't know what they can put there. I mean, that's, that is a good question.
But you know, the thing is, it's a redevelopment zone. Developer comes in and goes, this is the plan, and then if you guys like the plan. Larry's just gotta tell them.
So Larry, okay.
Yeah, if you're interested, come up with a plan and. Well, it's not that he's turned them down, it's just that people have called and said, can I put this there? Larry, it's in the R C D, and there's no anything designed for that particular property.
I think it's what he said. They just, they make a proposal.
And and in which case, now we can reach out and I can reach out to Larry.
Make a proposal.
Make a proposal, right. Everybody wants a redevelopment zone nowadays, cause they wanna get a pot. So when you, when they hear that, that it's been placed in a redevelopment zone, that's gonna, if anybody's gonna redevelop that, that's the best enticement you could have. And then Larry's just gotta say, look, you gotta talk to the owner, come up with a plan, submit it to the committee, and then they'll review it.
Now, is the committee, is it gonna land use board for approval? Like, can?
Well, we have to. We have to do the ordinance approving the redevelopment plan, and then they ultimately get their approval from the land use board. But the the plan as to what is gonna, is basically.
Once we approve it, it becomes the zone pretty much, right?
And then.
So the land use board would have to have to.
Well, you'll have an ordinance that says, and I know you probably don't want apartments, but say, say, okay, you could have twenty apartments there, and then these are the blah, 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 blah. And then it goes down to the land use board, and then they go through the application process down there. If they go to change it, they have to change the ordinance that allow, you know.
But as long as it's conformant to what the town had put in, the land use board has to.
Correct, so they gotta come in, and then you guys will, we will draft the ordinance that says this is what is permitted there, and these are the requirements.
Okay.
So it's even better than putting.
Yeah.
Right, okay, all right. So we'll we'll reach back out to the owner because he's, he's been, he's, he's a little unhappy. I mean, he's not like, completely bummed, but he's just like, you know, you guys are turning it all down, everything that going on there.
Yeah, I'd like to know where he heard that we're turning it down.
Well, I, you know, from the applicants.
Larry's reading what R C D is.
Oh, is that what's happening?
I think the people that are interested are not asking the right questions.
Well, that's true too.
The people that are interested aren't asking the right questions, and Larry is not really giving them all the information.
Well, yeah, I think, as as anybody, you really explain this to Larry too at all.
No, no, I'm thinking right.
Yeah, so I can see him being in a tough spot, yeah, not really understanding, yeah.
No, got it. We'll, that'll be cleared out this Tuesday.
Not gonna pause for a young man in the back. Are you waiting to dress us up or something? I don't wanna make you sit here all night. You just here to watch us for the night?
Soaking up the ambiance.
We're finally better than video games?
He doesn't have his biggest screen at home.
I never think we'd make it up to him. Okay, I was gonna just let you go and so you can leave.
Oh, is it with you?
No.
Oh, okay. I was gonna say, you made him come. Okay. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to adopt Resolution fifty three twenty one and fifty four twenty one. They're both N J D O T grant contracts for baby ones, for baby road, fifty three is for Beatty's Road Resurfacing Project. Fifty four is for Rural Grove Road Resurfacing Project. Anybody wanna make a motion for those two?
I'll make the motion.
Second, anybody have any questions, comments, discussion on that? That new system to improve it is a pain.
Yes, it is.
It's my only comment?
No, it's horrible. And 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 for, since you brought it up, Donna Becker, our gal who kind of really does this for our office, she got, she spoke with Rich Lovelace. Rich Lovelace is the guy that runs District One.
Mm-hmm.
And Rich Lovelace was venting to Donna today, telling her, telling her how many problems this new system has caused, and everybody's calling, and it's really, really bad. And so that was a little refreshing for me to hear that the guys that are, the D O D guys themselves.
It's not, it's not just open technologically.
No, no, trust me. If Donna, if Donna would like lead, uh, we, we, yeah, it's, it's not, it's not easy.
Okay.
No, not.
Mayor Burson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Yes.
Looking for a, uh, motion to adopt Resolution fifty five twenty one, the taxing redemption, where I make the motion. I make the motion. Uh, second, any questions, comments, discussion on it? Roll call.
Mayor Burson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott? Yes.
I make a motion, we open public hearing on ordinance one oh six twenty twenty one, the capital warrants purchase of D P W tractor and a power rake. Anyone a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Anyone have any questions over order six, one oh six twenty twenty one regarding that purchase? Hearing none, I make a motion, close public hearing. Anyone a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion, we adopt the ordinance one oh six twenty twenty one. Anyone want a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Burson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott? Yes.
Uh, I make a motion that we, for the introduction, where it's number one oh seven twenty twenty one is a bottom where it's providing an appropriation of fifty thousand dollars for acquisition of a sport utility vehicle. Anybody want a second of that?
A second.
Okay, I I just comment on it. I guess this is just really a budgetary mechanism. We authorized the purchase of the police sport utility vehicle this year in our budget, but the way we appropriated it is requiring this action. So it's not that we're taking any money or spending any more money that we don't have. It's just that, I guess, this is why we say we made a mistake. So, uh, that's all this is doing, is correcting that so that we can get that money into the police department so they can buy that vehicle, so. I have any questions or comments on it? Roll call.
Mayor Burson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott? Yes.
We're looking for a motion to introduce the salary warrants one a week twenty twenty one. Anybody want, for the administrator, anybody want to make the motion?
Uh, before we move on this one, I just, I left it as a caveat. If you guys wanted to consider adjusting um the range for the land use position at the same time. You certainly don't have to, but I left it there in case you wanted to only because publication cost wise.
I'd rather wait for like Frank and Paul or somebody to come up with a number on that. I, I wouldn't even know where to pick it.
Yeah, I think we're gonna wait on that.
Okay, that's fine. So just ignore that.
Bruce is gonna set up, I mean, when everything comes in, Bruce is gonna set up, um, some interviews.
So just keep in mind that we would be limited, um, any new hire, uh, would be limited to our current range for that start date, because if we get them in sooner than later, it's perfectly fine. But just so that you're aware, we'll be limited to that range.
Yeah, and I wouldn't even know what an appropriate range would be right now, so I think we need to research that.
And. All employees, why would she be doing the interviews?
Because the land use board, um, correct me if I'm wrong, we appropriate the money, but the land use board does the hiring, right?
Correct. Yeah, so they get to hire their own professionals, but what you do is if you didn't like who they hired, you just wouldn't appropriate the money.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you give them a budget every year, so.
They, they kind of do the appointment, but.
Right.
But we do the hiring.
Yeah, whereas it's like, you know, we have.
That makes sense.
The town planner, like, the, the town appoints the planner, and usually the land use board appoints the same planner, you know. You have a town planner, it's like town engineer, it just makes it easier. But I know towns where land use board might not be in step with the township committee, and they can appoint a different attorney and a different, they can't have the same attorney, but I mean, different planner, different engineer, and creates problems, but. At the end of the day, you control the person, so.
Okay. Okay, I'm looking for the, uh, motion to adopt where it's one oh eight twenty twenty-one, salary warrants, setting a salary, uh, for the township administrator position between five thousand dollar minimum and maximum seven thousand dollars for the additional duties. Anyone wanna make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, discussions on it? Roll call.
Mayor Burson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mrs. McDermott? Yes.
Recreation Committee bylaws.
They, um, they discussed it yesterday. I think, we see you're gonna get a revised copy in the next couple of days. I guess the language that you told them to change, yeah.
So, Brian, just so you can take it back to them, I did go back to the ordinance.
Yeah.
And kind of the items that were, were having a little bit of a conflict over. I rewrote the one that are in your packet.
Okay.
Very tightly adhering to the ordinance that's in place.
Okay.
So in order for them to adjust that, we would have to adjust our ordinance.
Okay.
So not that I want to say this is this, but it kind of is because it follows our ordinance.
Yeah.
So if that makes sense.
Yeah. Well, you let them know already, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll let them know.
Okay. So let's, with waiver requests.
There, there is no waiver request, so the solicitor permit application is in your packets for consideration. He was going to email me a request to expand the hours, and he never did.
So we need to do that.
Uh, no, so if you guys are in favor of authorizing, um, you know, the solicitation permit as submitted in the application.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what is the justice publishing company here?
What, what's the company?
Yeah.
I mean, are we selling encyclopedias here? Uh, what are we selling?
So, so he is a student, and I was, you know, I was learning the same thing. Um, it was kind of a busy day in the office the day that he was submitting this. But yeah, he's going door to door trying to solicit to sell some sort of literature. So if you guys want additional information, and honestly, if you guys wanted to authorize it, provided that Chief Homer is satisfied, because he actually does the background, you know, review of them, so it's up to you.
I'd like to know more about what he's trying to sell.
Yeah, me too.
Can be great. I don't want anyone knocking on my door.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, no, thank you. So we'll just hold?
No.
Electronic tax sale.
Uh, we have done this the last two years. The tax collectors love it. Um, I did want to provide you guys with the detail. It, it only costs, I think it costs, uh, in the first year twenty nine, uh, twenty nineteen, about seven hundred and ten dollars, and then last year it was about eight hundred dollars. It's fifteen dollars per parcel that is listed. And essentially, you know, it's online and it's, it's available to a, a much bigger, uh, far-reaching, uh, much more far-reaching, um, application than her just publishing it in, like, the Express Times. So we actually even had bitter, she was saying, uh, from Florida and different things like that, because they're just bidding on the taxing for the property. So the cost is gonna be dependent upon how many, uh, property owners that, and you know, by November have not paid their twenty twenty taxes. So we can't give you a definite number, but I'm in favor of authorizing it again this year.
So we need to take actions.
Yeah.
So we just need a motion to authorize what?
Authorize, uh, me to execute the, uh, contract for the electronic tax sale.
Anybody have any questions or comments on it, or want to discuss it further before we do? Okay, anyone wanna make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Any other further comments, questions? Roll call.
Mayor Burson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mrs. McDermott? Yes.
Software.
So that is also in my report. I gave you guys a pretty detailed summary of the cost differences. We've, we did actually, I asked Shannon to take it back to, um, to M S I to make sure that I was interpreting all their costs appropriately. And I think last month I had given you guys the complete breakdown on what their offer had been. But essentially, in a nutshell, they're offering to let us lease all those different components, the server and the software. So to give you guys an example, to date in twenty twenty-one, which we haven't gotten our year-end costs, at the year-end, when they close out our books, there's an additional fee. Right now, going with M S I instead, we would be cost about a hundred and sixty-nine dollars more. I don't believe that would be case. I, I think we're gonna save money. Um, but if you, if you actually look at the components, year one, two, and three, we would be paying off the, the server and the software lease. And then year four and five, we're just paying, um, for the software. And then every year beyond that, we're just paying our support cost. So there's gonna be a significant savings, um, you know, long-term. Year four and five, we're gonna save a few thousand dollars, and then beyond that, we're gonna save.
Am I right in thinking too that this software is easier for you all to operate? So it will probably save me hours as well?
Eloise and Shannon both prefer this. Um, Susan has used both, so she's fine either way. I find admins very difficult, and I try to avoid it.
Okay.
Um, so I think it's a good idea. And my last comment is, I think it's a really good idea for us to have a fresh start on this. They will help us, you know, convert everything. And I think I've expressed to you guys some of the difficulty with all the different CFOs. There could be expenditures under different line items. And it's very difficult, you know, and I try to bring you guys a cost evaluation of something over a bunch of years. It's hard because we have to be creative in how many ways we look that up. This is gonna, we're gonna have a new line item, and it's gonna be definitive, and then we're just gonna stay on top of, um, employees to make sure it stays that way, so.
And it works very well when you have new employees to train them on.
Well, it saves money. It's even, it's, it's, they break even initially.
Right.
It saves money, and it's an easier program to run, so. I'm, I guess I'm okay. So anybody wanna make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Anybody have any further questions, comments, discussion on it? Roll call.
Mayor Burson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mrs. McDermott? Yes.
Thomas Door Park Restroom's timed door lock. We talked about this before. What are we looking for? Just authorization? This money, I thought we already discussed to do it, and it's out of, uh, open space. Does it?
My recollection is that we were gonna prepare for it in the next budget year, but I'd like to get it done.
Yeah, I think we gotta get, I thought we were supposed to be done for this year, to tell you the truth.
I think it fell off the radar in twenty twenty, Wes.
Because we, I remember talking about it, and we all kind of, I thought we all agreed at that time. Really gonna have to worry about a police officer going to block it and stuff. So do we need to take any other action, or do we just tell you to tell Joe tomorrow to get us prices?
Yeah, sounds good.
Correct. And wasn't part of this conversation so that we could have the bathrooms open a little bit more regularly too?
So this will be, you know, we set the time, they open eight, they close at six. It doesn't take Joe's guys to open it or Richard's guys to close it, and.
This is a big problem, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's something.
No, I know, I, I know that thing and.
But that, that could happen.
Any of his open with the timeline.
Right, right. But I guess the point being is when it's time to get locked at night.
Right.
We're always assuming everything happens in like, but that's not necessarily true. But, uh, you know, if, if the police department is tied up and busy, and they don't get to lock it.
But, but during the day now, are we going to leave the bathrooms open?
I, I think we, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with even having it open in the winter, like during daylight hours for people if they're there for a walk and stuff. I, I, I don't see any reason not, well, we have to winterize.
We have to winterize.
Well, as long as weather's permitting.
Right, 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 right.
Let's put it that way. So I, no, that's what the.
I just, I'm personally, I know lots of particularly the ladies, and I've gotta believe it's a challenge for, uh, uh, children too.
Yeah.
The porta-potties are porta-potties.
I'm a guy.
No, no, that's great in a, uh, a biggie men like music.
I personally, very much.
I said that right off the bat in the beginning of the year, you remember about those poor little girls with soccer, exactly.
No, I hear you. I hear you.
So do you want me to ask Joe to reopen them A M to, and we'll ask Richard, they can? Oh, I just gotta look, close it. Close it for another month and then try to get these installed.
Unless we, if we have any, can we just authorize them to spend up, like, do you think? Do you think more than a thousand dollars?
I wouldn't think so. I think that, if I remember, I think Joe had a concern about, we might have to change out the doors as well, because if they lock somebody was in, then you'd have to be able to push out.
Okay.
Yeah. But, you know, we have open space money, and I think it's just practical. So if you want to authorize not to exceed.
I'm, I'll make a motion that we get these time locks on, and whatever other app, rash, we need to accommodate the restroom is being open. And I'll make it up to fifteen hundred dollars, so we know we have enough. But Joe, I trust with getting the best price, so. Any other questions, comments on it?
Yeah, only one comment. Not that I'm opposed to us doing this. I don't know the first question they're gonna ask in the open space community. So, well, how come this wasn't brought to us? But I'm okay with doing it, but I just want you to explain.
Okay.
I mean, like, really, we have to go to, we have to ask them every time we need to order toilet paper for the bathroom?
There you go.
Next town meeting, can you?
Oh, we need another cart of toilet paper. I mean.
We, we, uh, we can't do whatever, like, lock them up until it's ordered.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's inconvenient, but it, it, it really kind of needs to be done.
I have gotten several calls, people.
We spent a lot of money on that park. It's there. It's, and want people to use it. We encourage people to use it, and why have bathrooms that you can't use, you know?
Right.
Just.
That last thing that was done, it was still daylight out.
Yeah.
See, that's what Bob said.
And if we lose.
Everybody always assumes, everybody's done in the darkness of night. That's not necessary.
Right.
What it is, so. Okay, roll call. Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mrs. McDermott? Yes.
Okay. Resolutionation of the land use board secretary. Anybody wanna talk about that, or just making a motion to accept it with regret?
Yeah, with regret.
Okay. You making that motion?
Yeah, I made the motion to accept the resignation of the land use board secretary, which we got, um, banker for the service of the township.
I'll second that. And the only I add to that is she's another one of these employees who came and went, where you hardly even got a chance to know her because of, uh, and we've had like three or four that happened to, and I feel bad that, about that for her, that we really never got to know her. You probably seen her more, or at least zoomed in with them, but anyway. But yeah, so I second that. We send the letter with acceptance, with regret. Roll call.
Mayor Burson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mrs. McDermott? Yes.
Contract, formerly's contractor, we discussed that, right? Okay, job descriptions for the zoning and code enforcement officer, land use board secretary. We have to discuss on that.
Well, I asked Lisa to get some information together, since we had the last meeting, we made her administrator as well, if that's part of the administrator's job. And it's important that we start getting all of our employees to have job descriptions that they have to follow. Her suggestion, Lisa had some good suggestions that would help, where at the end of the year, she sends out letters to all professionals that are interested to coming back. It's important that we start communicating with them more, so that Lisa as all spokesperson, they can go to her, she can come to us, and it alleviates us from too many of us getting our hands in the pot, or too much disagreeing, or who knows what's going on. So by her researching this, and it will also help her with a handbook, because every town has a handbook, they have policies and procedures that are you have to sign something that says you're going to comply with it. I mean, as a professional or an employee of ours, we all have to follow rules and regulations, so that is one of the reasons you were researching this, correct?
Well, I don't think we're ready to adopt it. Is there your suggestion?
I don't, I don't think so. I wish we were, um.
But I don't know if, uh, Paul, if you got a chance to look at them?
Uh, I, I have gone over. I know if you wanna look at them, maybe.
I'll take a look.
John Drill too about it.
Yeah.
And Mike may even look at it, so we can determine, uh, what type of statutory authority we could give, like, especially zoning officer, because that's becoming a you know, a lot of work. It's just a lot of work being a zoning officer here and there. It's and then we have Larry for like only about two hours a week, and I, I just think it's getting to the point, we need somebody more hours than that.
I agree.
We need people going out and enforcing it, and like with the signs, I have to go out and start have a statutory authority to issue a summons and find them. So I think that's what we have to get together, is what we want, what the land use board thinks we need to force their laws, and what you think we need to do to make it slower. Yeah, I think the other thing too, part of that is some of the ordinances for zoning enforcement that have these ridiculously long time periods, and then it's gotta come to the, you know. I think that's another thing. Once we get these other things straightened out, you know, you know, pull like an ordinance at a time to say, you know, because now you gotta keep so many things. Notice that back then, you've got, you know, there's just some very complicated procedure on something that shouldn't be that complicated.
Yeah.
That you're bound, and you're bound by, because it's in the ordinance book, so.
So.
The, the other thing I wanted to mention is the one that I pulled together for the land use board secretary, I was, I was shocked to find that, um, John Drill had actually apparently done that in two thousand and eighteen. It predates me, and he had already submitted it. So he was under the impression that that was previously adopted and enforced as a job description for that title.
Right.
But I've told you guys, I've never, I've never found, you know, a binder with job description. So I think we have to start over, but it's interesting that we already paid him to do the work, and it's, and it's pretty.
And this is his version?
Yeah, it's, it's very close, yeah. So anyway, we already paid a professional to do it. I think it's, it's on point, and it's very thorough, so.
So you're, you guys are looking at, Mike, Mike has copies or not yet?
Not yet. So there's kind of two components. We have to, we should be creating the position and sort of outlining, you know, the duties and administrative and what in our code. But then we should also have like an internal document that sort of itemizes those essential duties.
Because people should know what they're, what they have to do.
Right.
And stuff, so, and then it's like land use, when you're interviewing someone, you should have something to give them, saying this is what we expect of you. Are you willing to do it? Are you able to do? You have the experience, the education to do it, and
Right.
Things like that, so.
It's a starting point.
Yeah. So by next month, let's try to be able, make a motion to, uh, for those two. And zoning officer, do we have anything specifically discussed about, or that was part of what?
Well, that was part of what we were discussing, yeah. Job description.
While Larry's here, maybe we can ask him about the, the letter for the building graffiti, if it ever went out.
No, I didn't know that building was still there till yesterday. Go by and I see it's just one section graffiti is on there. No, I didn't know that building was still there till yesterday. Go by and I see it's just one section of graffiti down there.
So I think Lisa's gonna get with you, um what we want to do is send them an official letter with the ordinance attached to it, telling them they have to remove the graffiti, or they're gonna be fined.
I had sent them a letter for other property he has. They called me up, they're supposed to take care of those. But this building, again, I remember the Amco gas station fifty years ago, I know it was still there, I go back there yesterday.
It's all overgrown.
Wisely, barely see the building, yes, yeah.
And then the other thing was um, we have recurrence of certain businesses putting up these snipe signs.
Yes.
Same thing, we want to notice them, give them a chance, and then let them know if we keep saying.
Many of these, excuse me, good.
Yeah, I don't want to name the the offender.
Oh, no, 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 but many of these, you can't find the people, they put a sign up on the phone.
No, 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 this is a business, this is a prominent business.
Oh, right, right, but you, you have those, you have all sorts going out there.
Anyway, Lisa will, Lisa will get it.
But you say, no, it's all kind of loosey goosey, like, go, go over to the place, like, call them up, like, send them a letter, like.
I think what we agreed to.
We had to tighten this up.
You send them an official letter from the town stating zoning that they're violating, give them a warning, tell them if they continue to violate it, then you're gonna get fined. But, you know, Lisa's gonna get.
I get what they're, yeah, tighten it up.
Responsable, see, I have any? I I just wanna, I, I sent Lisa a thank you to the township, and just thank all you guys for the support you gave me the past month when I had the death of the family, I appreciate it that you did, and. The flowers and stuff that you sent, so uh, thank you. Yeah, thanks. I'll make a motion, we open public comment.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to come up to?
Hi, Vicky Little, six thirty two South Main Street. I am, uh. I'm looking for a little direction, if, I don't expect to get an answer tonight, but you know, point me in the right direction, or somebody get back to me. I'm having an issue where I live with drainage, and I've been in contact the last few months with um. The county engineer, uh the road department. I I actually brought this to the committee a few committees ago. The farmer next to me, the mud coming down the hill, and I was told that, you know, that's a property owner issue. As of right now, the property owner has received the letter, uh they have not yet responded, but the farmer did come down the other day, and. He did like some stuff over there to keep the mud from coming down, but that's only part of the problem. The problem is ever since the bridge and the sidewalk were put in, the water, when it rains, before when it was just grass there, everything just went into the ground. But when that bridge was put in, that bridge is lower than the road, so at the end of the bridge, where the sidewalk comes out. That's also lower than the road, so all the water from the road comes down and settles on, sometimes that sidewalk is underwater. In the winter, it's a half inch thick of ice. I have pictures and everything of what it looks like when it's underwater. And then the path going up toward the school is also on an incline, so when it rains a lot, it all comes down and it settles right at my driveway. The issue when there's ice there, and again, I brought this, I mean, I think I even spoke to Mike a few years ago about this. When there's ice there, the kids walk out in the street, that's a curve. So if they're gonna avoid, because there's no way to get rid of that, if they're gonna avoid that, and they're gonna walk out in the street, and now there's more traffic, the cars are going faster. God forbid, they're walking out in that street, and a car comes around not paying attention. This past year, that um area has been underwater the entire summer. It's gotten progressively worse over the years. And um I spoke with Bill's office, and they said that next year, that road, because I went to them because it's a county road, which is what the township told me years ago. They said that um that road is gonna be, is scheduled for resurfacing next spring, and they're gonna get a surveyor out, and they're going to um. Try to figure out how to fix that and make it more level, so it's not underwater, and that would be part, that survey would be part of the resurfacing contract. Now they're telling me they're not really sure about that because the project was done by the township. So I'm back here again, but my, the the mud, I mean, you're gonna see the pictures when it's bad.
Cliff still farming?
Yes, he's still farming it, but the the son, not the, not the old man, the the younger one.
Well, well.
But the bridge was a county replacement, the town had nothing to do with that. The only thing the town did was put the walking back.
Yeah, I I have.
This has been going on for ten years now.
We hear what you're saying, and when we close public comment, people will be loud dancing, okay?
Okay, all right, so like I said, just, you know, point me, what do I do?
We hear you.
Okay, thank you.
You thank you. Anyone else? I'll make a motion to close public comment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody want to respond to Vicky? Sounds like an engineering mistake, Mike.
Yeah, I uh, it has to, I bet it's more than two years, Vicky, since we we talked about this.
We talked about this.
And I, and I think we talked to a farmer, I think he did some diversion and to to divert some of the runoff that was coming down and whatnot, but I didn't, I. Obviously don't walk that area, so I don't see the problem. I mean, the water on the road, yes, when we drive, when I drive through there. But what Bill suggested, and that that clearly can be part of resurfacing, I mean, that's, we're not talking about realigning the road. We're just talking about a little bit of leveling course and kind of modifying, it it, that that's simple stuff. It mean, it should be.
But yesterday, they actually, the road department came out yesterday, and what they did was.
County, county.
Right.
Vicky, we can't have conversation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, yeah. You can address her, but we can't have a dialogue.
I'm sorry, yeah, I should know better, right? Okay, go ahead.
Well, no, it's, I think there's probably, especially if, I didn't know that six.
Here's my online, we're gonna look at.
Look at, yeah, I I gotta call Phil on.
Who's your point person? Mike, you're the point person for her?
Yeah, for her.
Sounds like it's probably in my.
Should you call Bill Lauer? I mean, I knew they were gonna say, and they're kind of right, we did, that was a town project, right, the sidewalks, the bridge.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, the pedestrian, yeah, that's a rare occasion, I'm gonna defend the county on that.
They defer to us, because they kind of have a point, right? But in conjunction, you working with them, let's try to get that corrected.
Sounds very correctable, but let's see.
Well, I mean, it's, it sounds like they had an answer, and then they decided wasn't their problem, but let's, let's see what, what we can do to help. I mean, if we had to do something, we have to do something. But. That's, it's an issue for kids walking to school. How do you, how do you not address, it's like almost refusing to put in a crosswalk, but.
I I I wish you had a crystal ball, see what happens with this one, that one.
Thank you.
You're okay, you're welcome, Vicky.
I can say thank you.
Yeah. Okay, uh. Look, uh, anybody have anything else they want to do a public, because I know these people are not gonna want to ruin the rest of their night waiting for us. Although I don't expect a long executive, do you, Mike?
No.
That's one of the rare attorneys who is pretty clear. Okay, so I'll make a motion, we go to executive session, what are we gonna discuss, Mike?
Uh, just truck weight limits.
Okay.
And I think that, do we have anything else?
Yeah, what else? We just talked, like, we said, oh, you know, was it the truck weight limits? I thought there was one other item, like.
Oh, LMR, LMR.
Oh, yes.
And those are both uh, one's attorney-client, one's potential.
Oh, and the other one was that funding uh for the fire department, right?
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's right.
So.
Fire department, that's contractual.
Okay, yes, so that's the three things.
Yep.
Okay, anybody want a second? My motion goes to executive. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, y'all. Have a good night. Larry, thanks for all you do.
Oh, geez, thanks for thanking me. I'm looking forward to getting uh. This together here.
Yeah, well, we gotta do something, because two hours a week isn't making it, you know, like, we gotta address a lot of issues.
More than that, coming early sometime, uh, late.
Well, I mean, but we're budget, you know, we, we just feel that the scope's really expanding rapidly for us, so. Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I, can we stay, or?
Can I make a motion, we come out of uh executive session? All in favor?
Aye.
Mike?
Okay, Mayor, we merge to executive session, eight fifty six PM, where we discuss three matters. One was uh truck weight limits, which was attorney-client privilege. An LMR matter, which is a potential litigation and contractual matter dealing with the fire department, no official action was taken. Copies of these minutes will be available at such time as the committee determines there is no harm to the public interest.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we authorize the attorney to take action as discussed in executive session. Anybody want a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mrs. McDermott? Yes.
Anybody have anything else? Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Anybody want a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.